And we are recording, we are live and ready to go. So welcome everybody to our East County Magazine Candidate Forum, for Alcohomet City Council District 2. District 2 is the north central portion of the city. There are six candidates on the ballot and I'm delighted that we have five of them who are participating tonight. They are Humbert Cabrera, Martin Van Ditteren, Stephanie Harper, and Michelle Metzl, and Martin Van Denteren. A sixth candidate, Letitia Dickerson, did not respond to our invitation. So we really want to thank our candidates for participating, the members of the public who sent in questions to us, and the Facebook Journalism Project for supporting our virtual candidate forum series during the COVID-19 pandemic when it's really tough for the candidates to get out there. There aren't the usual in-person forums. So we're really very appreciative of everyone for helping us make this happen. John Sepulveda is our producer and co-host, and he will be our timekeeper tonight. And he will be enforcing the time limits so that we can fit in as many of the public's questions as we can. So without further ado, we would like to begin with opening statements. We would like each of you to please take a minute and a half and tell us about yourselves, your qualifications, accomplishments, and what you hope to do if you're elected. Mr. Cabrera, as the Alcohomet Planning Commissioner there, and first on the top of the screen, we'll let you go first. And we're going to go in order, folks, and we'll be changing so everybody gets a chance to be first on some of the questions. So go ahead.
Well, I guess I won the coin toss. Thank you very much. Did, does everybody can hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. Thank you all for being here. Thank you, Miriam, for putting this together. The thank you to all the citizens that are watching. I know it takes a lot of time and effort and I really do appreciate it. And to all of the candidates that showed up, I appreciate you being here so we can talk about the issues and maybe get something better out of Alcohomet. I've been volunteering for LAPA, CASA, Community Action Service Advocacy Rotary, ALPS, Homeless Task Force, Chamber of Commerce, the Government Affairs Committee, National Hispanic Police Officers Association, East County Business of the Year, Salvation Army. And that's why I was voted Citizen of the Year. I actually worked very hard with several different people and a lot of different citizens and a lot of different groups. And I know how government works. I'm currently a planning commissioner and I'm ready to go. I think that some of the best things about Alcohomet in East County is that people actually work together. We actually worked together to get Fox Shocks and 300 jobs in Alcohomet. Spent nine years of my life helping to get the 33,000 square foot food choice food bank into Salvation Army. And we were actually doing a lot of work at Rotary and ALPS and everywhere else to help common citizens and everyday citizens with help for the homeless. And I'm on the Homeless Task Force. And we've seen a lot of great things in Alcohomet and there's a lot more left to do. So I don't see that my minute and a half is up, but I'm going to cut it short and say, welcome everybody and thank you for being here.
Very good. And I do want to welcome Juan Carlos Mercado, who has just joined us, our fifth candidate, who is just--
Apologize.
No problem. And Juan, do you go by Juan Carlos? So I know I saw Charlie in your bio.
Juan Carlos, you can call me Charlie. That's my childhood nickname. So I kind of like that.
So we each have, everyone has a minute and a half of the opening statements. Let's go next to Martin. We're going to just go clockwise on this to keep it easy so that we can remember this. Martin, your opening statement.
Very good. Well, hello, my name is Martin Van Denteren. And I've been a long-term resident of East County. I've lived in Lakeside, Santee, in Alcohomet. I've raised my family here. I have two daughters, Tiffany and Amber. And they both graduated from Granite Hills High School. And, you know, I've worked as a B-1 builder for over 40 years, mainly in the East County. And I was also a building inspector for the city of Alcohomet, Building Fire and Safety Inspector. And until just recently, some of the COVID unfortunately removed the position. There were some cutbacks. And May 20th was my last day. Unfortunately, I very much enjoyed the job. In that being said, you know, I developed many relationships with people because normally between 50 and 100 people I would see a week doing inspections. And I got to know a lot of people in Alcohomet. And several of them, you know, pushed me to go ahead and do this. I've always put a lot of effort into doing more than I'm supposed to. And I love helping people. I love helping them get through their issues. And that's the main reason why I'm running. Politics is something that I have a lot of practice in, but I'm learning a lot at a very fast rate. But I'm really looking forward to developing those relationships even further as council member for District 2. And thank you so much for the invitation.
You're welcome. Michelle Metzl, let's hear from you with your opening remarks.
Evening, thank you. My name is Michelle Metzl and I am running for Alcohomet City Council District 2. I want to give you a little background. I've lived in Alcohomet since 1979. I currently work for a government contractor as a department administrator. This is my first time running for an elected position. I may be a rookie in politics, but I'm not a rookie in life. I've been around the block a few times. I work with government contracts at work. I have to interact with people from all around the world. You have to learn to be fair in how you apply processes and procedures. My husband and I have raised our family here. And I've been involved in several activities in the city such as the International Friendship Festival, a participating member of the Alcohomet Community Cleanup Group, and homeless outreach with churches. I attend many city council meetings and events when possible because I do work full-time. I am physically conservative. I'm socially moderate. And I feel that District 2 is a blue collar worker or a blue collar, hardworking community. Our future depends on communities working together with law enforcement and city government to keep drugs and criminals from creating havoc in our community. And Alcohomet should be a place that parents will want to live and raise their families, where students can walk home safely from school, play in their front yard, and enjoy local parks. My hope is that you will see that I bring common sense, ethics, and a desire to be the voice of this district. Some people focus on race and ethnicity. But I say that if you deal with people honestly and fairly, it doesn't matter what your gender or ethnicity is. We are all one community and we all want a great place to live. So I ask voters out there who are watching this to join me and help make Alcohomet a place that we can be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Michelle. And next, we're going to hear from Stephanie Harper.
Hi. Thank you once again, Miriam, for having me here. And thanks for everybody watching on Facebook. You know, Alcohomet was once a valley of opportunity. We recall that because there was opportunity here in our valley. And as a young single mother, it was tough and there were struggles. But I was able to pay rent and I was able to pay my bills. I was able to do it all on my own without any help. But it seems like that time is long since passed due. Now it seems like just kind of a city of obstacles, obstacles that we all face, but some of us just have to face them in different ways. Some of us live with the day and some of us live day-to-day. Some of us are, we got families struggling to keep their homes and we have families struggling to find a home for the night. We have senior citizens who are on fixed incomes and on the verge of losing their place. They have to decide whether they want medication or a place to live. We've got children being raised in hotel rooms and in cars, calling the streets home. We have over 700 people homeless and with less than half of them in shelters. And Alcohomet's still the poorest city in San Diego County and I live in one of the poorest districts. But it seems pretty bleak, but there is a light at the end of the tunnel. There is a beacon of hope and I'm going to be your beacon for the rest of this election. My name is Stephanie Harper and I am running for Alcohomet City Council. But my city needs, I'm the change my city needs to see. I go to all the, go to as many city council meetings as I can whenever there's a time to voice my concerns. I do go up there and I voice them very loudly and very proudly. I'm out there in my, on ground floor. I'm not going to govern from the top of a building, looking down where all the problems are small. I'm right there on ground floor. I go to Wells Park, I go to Cohom Park, I go to the welfare office. I'm an average person. I'm out there, I'm just like everybody else. But I have a passion for this city and I have a passion that flows through me to be a voice, to help people out. I'm a proud Democrat and I believe that each of our districts are very, very diverse. And they need representation from people who live in those districts. And we need to keep our community together. And the only way you know something is if you walk in those shoes and I'm walking in those shoes. So thank you for the opportunity to be up here for election. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Stephanie. And Juan Carlos, or Charlie, as you go by, let's hear from you.
Hi, thank you for having me. As everyone here, we're all running for City Council District 2. So I want everyone to know, si, adios, año. Claro que sí, Juan Carlos Mercado. Los quiero mucho. And Betsy Deutsch is Heisen Carlos. El Camas Mexico. Es Betsy Deutsch. So 20%. Anyways, I'm Juan Carlos Mercado, Charlie. I'm an immigrant and I started working in the fields at the age of five. My father left me and my mother passed away at that time. And I came to the United States, you know, at a young age, teenage years, eighth grade. And I didn't speak any English. I struggled to assimilate. So I understand with a lot of immigrants, it's a lot of immigrant population here in Alcohomet and very diverse, proudly diverse. So we connect. And I joined the Army when I turned 19. Still learning the language, still assimilating. I did a combat tour, two combat tours, Bosnia and Iraq. And also I'm alumni from San Diego State University. So a lot of the candidates, even in the other races, are from San Diego State. So kudos for San Diego State. And I was, I'm an ROTC graduate, commissioned, number one in my class, very difficult to do, ASATK Commander, head tactical officer. And I did a tour of combat operations as a platoon leader in Bosnia with, you know, millions of dollars of equipment, sensitive items with top secret clearance, working with embassies in France, Hungary, and all throughout the European theater. So I do have that experience. And even with all that, my number one concern was always the lives and the safety of every soldier, every one of my soldiers. Recently, I retired from the Sheriff's Department as a correctional officer. So I was not on patrol. I didn't arrest anyone. So I, but I do have knowledge of SOPs, post requirements. So I think I have the edge in that area. And I think I can work closely with the Alcohomet Police Department. And also, I became involved in community work with veteran issues. Okay, we have homeless veterans, veterans with PTSD, lacking medical care, mental health, unemployment, you know, everything. And they're getting deported. So I did the deported veterans of America. I wrote the book, Faith of the Deported Veterans, so we can bring light to the deportations of soldiers.
Okay.
But closer to here, and I'll wrap this up.
Yeah, we're timed.
I've learned that the community has the same concerns, homelessness, mental health, physical health. And, you know, so that's how I became involved in politics. So again, I just want to, you know, focus on that and bring that to the community of Alcohomet.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to our first question, and we'll give you up to two minutes apiece on this because it's a major issue. Alcohomet, like many cities across the United States, has seen protests recently over racial justice issues and policing. I would like to ask how you would balance concerns among people who have issues over racial injustices and would like to see changes in policing or police funding versus those who are concerned over making sure that there's adequate police protection for the community. Martin, it's your turn to go first.
Perfect, thank you so much. Okay, well, one of the issues that I see, you know, as a building inspector, we were trained through the police academy. And we get a citation, we actually, we get certificates for that. And that being said, there's a number of trainings that I was exposed to and I experienced. So one of the first problems that we have is with the police force and the people that are worried about what happens to them is, I believe, into training. Because if you were there, you would find it almost offensive and the actions and the combat training, which I went through as well. So I think it's one of the first problems that we have is because they're just reacting the way that they're supposed to, that they're being trained to. And I also think that's the level of respect that the people have to have. You know, if you're in a position where you feel uncomfortable with the police and the law and you're in some type of action with them, compliance is by your best weapon. You know, they're going to push through their training, what they're supposed to do. And then you have that opportunity to comply and listen. That's the reason why we have civil actions. You just go to court if you have a problem and/or issue. As far as the injustice is concerned, I find that, you know, very difficult. You know, I went to school on the East Coast and I went to a mainly black school. I was a minority. And my innocence from here led me to success there because I didn't run, I didn't hide, I didn't stick my head in the sand. I got laughed off of tables, people took food off my plate. So, you know, I've been on the other end, so I understand it. So my point is that if you just walk into any kind of situation, take the opportunity to put yourself in their position and then act. Don't act on your thought, your desire. Think about them. And for them, just try to comply.
Thank you very much. Michelle, could we hear from you on the issue of racial justice and policing?
Thank you. I oppose defunding the police. I fully support our law enforcement officers. As a former EMT, I relied on police officers and fire department to help me with providing medical assistance to patients. If I go on scene of a stabbing, I really relied on police officers to make sure that they have my backs, I can attend to my patient, and they do their job. And I encourage anyone who has condemnation for law enforcement to do a ride-along, do a day ride, do a night ride, or become a police officer. They have a hard job. And as far as racial justice, we need to talk about that to make sure that the law is applied equally and fairly. My family is multiracial. And I think that we have everybody come to our house. So I want to support the community. If there are injustices, then we look into it. But other than that, we need to get more funding into our police and add one to two officers per shift to make sure that our 103-plus thousand residents are equally protected, that things are, situations are handled properly. And if there is overreaching by the police, then we look into it. And they need to be held accountable. And officers need to be allowed to report excessive force by their fellow officers.
Thank you very much. Stephanie, could we hear from you, please, on the issue of racial justice and policing public safety?
Well, Miriam, when you asked this question, the first thing I brought, was brought to mind was Alfreda Longo. And that was four years ago. And it popped off here in Alcohomet and we all had to deal with that. I believe that our police department did handle that to the best of their ability. There was a lot of tension. I was there at the barbecues where they were there at. They took down the memorial, which I thought was kind of just a tooth. But we spent money to keep an officer watching over there to make sure that they didn't set that up again. I don't think we need to go that far. We don't. When you're, when you do your job, Miriam, you're great at your job. And if you weren't great at your job, we would know it. So police departments, just the same way, when a police officer is great at their job, you'll know it. He'll be the one that handles the situation well. He'll be the one that wants to be helpful, wants to, no matter what you look like, no matter if you're black, white, red, yellow, brown, purple with diamonds, he's still going to treat you the same way because that's his job, is upholding the law. But we have a lot of officers that don't know our laws. And when you don't know the law, you can't do your job to your best ability. And there are police officers out there that will go and search the law. They will do the things that they need to do to do their job to the best of their ability. But our crime rate is the highest of any East County city and the violent crime is escalating here while property crime is going down. And one of the reasons for that is the lack of sufficient police. We've got 1.14 officers for each 1,000 citizens. That's really heavy load on them. We have to maybe take some of that load off them, give them a perp team so they can handle people like what happened with Alfreda Longo. Or maybe we could get a citizens oversight committee so the police aren't policing themselves. Also, I think a good idea would be to open up a police academy to get our youth involved with the police department, have them do ride-alongs, have them want to be police officers again, instead of wanting to be against the police because that brings a lot of racial tension too. You hear it on the radio, you see it in the kids. We need to bring them back home. We need to bring people back into our police department. And know that that person with the star on their badge is safety. One you call first when you need protection. And I commend them for their job, but we can always do better.
Thank you. Juan Carlos, or Charlie?
Yeah. Yes, thank you. Well, we definitely lack adequate public safety. The Alcohomet Police Department is not meeting the needs of the community. I think it's obvious. Too much focus on deadly force. Not enough on non-lethal force. The officer responded to Alfreda Longo. You know, it's got that mentality of you show up and your hands on the gun already. And he, this event happened right across the street from my house. So I had, you know, I got to see all the events, not just what the media put out there. And, you know, if you investigate the officer that was involved with the shooting, he has a, his past is questionable. And that's put in it lightly. Okay, so let's not jump, let's not just say, yeah, just the job is difficult. I was a deputy and I have many friends who do the job. The bottom line is residents of Alcohomet are not happy. Increasing the budget, throwing money at training when the training itself is outdated. And I know because I attended most of the training, per training is eight hours one day and the follow-up training is a video online. Okay, I'm not sure that that's adequate. Another thing is, yes, most of the officers are doing their job and do it right. But when you see a bad apple and you say nothing, then you are complicit. So that needs to change. And a lot of, some of the officers have a problem saying Black Lives Matter. They can't even say that. And I've seen it. I'm not talking, I'm not quoting. I am, I've seen it. Okay, I've been to the events, I go where they socialize and I hear it firsthand. So we, before, let's put the brakes on just increasing the budget and throwing money before we know where the money's going and if the training is the best training that we have available for them. And remember, remember, you know, the pension system for the officers is not a good one. You know, I already talked to the city manager and I told him and he agreed with me. If we went to, if we hired the services of the Sheriff's Department, we would be saving nearly a million dollars a year. The only caveat of that is the pension system. But the Sheriff's Department has decreased the pensions for the deputies. So if the Sheriff's Department is doing the same, you know, it looks like a very viable option.
Thank you. We're at time. Thank you very much. Humbert Cabrera, let's hear your thoughts on racial justice and policing issues in Alcohomet. We lost your sound, Humbert. Unmute yourself, please.
Yeah, I wanted to try to kind of focus more on the second district. We have a lot of issues like Bradley Bridge and parking and all sorts of stuff there. But this is a very important issue and I'm glad you brought it up. And I want to give kudos to Stephanie. I was there the first night that the Alfreda Longo thing happened. And I was actually there talking with the citizens of Alcohomet. And I was actually there participating with Miriam and with Stephanie at some of the events. Some of them, we crossed our paths on some and on some we weren't. But I like people that have attended the city council meetings and are not just showing up here to run for the second district. And I also have to say, as an Alcohomet native and somebody that was born here and has lived in the second district since he was four years old, I don't like people to just move into the second district who want to run for the second district. The second district is a very unique area. And I think we need to start thinking about the second district instead of these kinds of ways. And I'll tell you one thing. I was endorsed by Senator Anderson, Pastor Hal Brown, Councilman Bob McClellan--
Can you answer the question?
--of the Latino Police Officers--
Just stop interrupting, please.
But I'll tell you one thing. I was not endorsed, nor am I taking money from the Good Old Boys Network. And some of us on this screen are. And I want to say that I would never take money from the Good Old Boys Network. And those people have come to me and they have said, "We do not want a Latino in that seat. We do not want, we do not like the fact that you hire Caldeans. We do not like the fact that you hire people that are immigrants. All of them are legal immigrants and we will not do business with you." And so this still exists in Alcohomet. You saw what happened with the churches over the weekend. And this is a terrible thing, but this still exists. So I'm not going to take money from those people. So I'd like to hear other people that will not take money from the Good Old Boys Network.
Before we go on--
That's where I am. As far as the police officers go, the training is there. They have to get retrained every year and there are--
We're at time, I'm sorry to--
That we need to do--
Yeah, we're at time, Humbert.
We're at time, but also I would like to remind everybody, this is not a repeat of last night.
Let's be respectful and let everybody have their say and not interrupt. And, you know, you can always, if you have a response, you can use part of your time on the next question, you know, or in the closing statements. So I do have a quick follow-up question. A reader, actually, just text or viewer, I should say, just texted in a question for us. But the question is, we have seen clashes in several East County cities recently between some groups, you know, some of these protests that were shouting racial slurs. And there's been some physical altercation. Some of them, you know, had white supremacist, you know, Nazi insignia and so forth. And then last night at the debate, we did hear the president refused to distance himself from white supremacy and actually goes so far as to tell the Proud Boys to stand by and stand down, perhaps referring to Election Day, a lot of people thought. So the question from the viewer is, you know, are you good with or are you concerned about the idea of groups like the Proud Boys showing up at polls on Election Day in Alcohomet? And I guess, I've lost track of who. I believe it's, Michelle, I think it's your turn to take that one first. And let's just do a minute on that quickly or less, if you can do it. But I think it's important.
That's a good question. I don't take my family to Alabama. And the reason why I don't take my family to Alabama is because my family back there that I never knew and never grew up with are racist. I believe racism has no place in Alcohomet. As I said before, my family is multiracial--
You're getting money from them.
Okay. This is John, the timekeeper. If this happens again, I'm going to mute. I'm sorry that we do not have a good example at the federal level, but we are not going to jump in and start yelling at each other. Michelle, I'm going to restart your clock. I want to hear about your experience in Alabama. And Mr. Cabrera, if you want to address this in your response, you're more than welcome to.
I didn't get additional time when they were interrupting me.
I'm sorry. We'll give you 10 extra seconds, 15 extra seconds on the next question, Humbert. And that's a fair enough statement. Go ahead, Michelle.
Racism has no place in Alcohomet. And I think that anybody who thinks that it is a good thing to have Proud Boys, white supremacists, is not good. I'm shocked. I've been accused of something that I didn't do. If you were at my home at any time growing up, I've had families living with us from all walks of life. People who needed help, they'd come to my house and you would get the shirt off my back if you needed it, got a place to live, bring your children. I am Nana to half of the kids at 40 years old because they grew up with my daughter, who is half a Spanish. And for someone to accuse me of taking money is unconscionable. And you don't know me. And I will denounce any white power being at the polls. Thank you.
Okay. And Stephanie, your thoughts on that?
Well, as far as racism goes, I wouldn't, I'm going to go walking into my polls. Well, as far as racism goes, I wouldn't, I'm going to go walk into my polls, I don't have a problem with that. Doesn't matter who's standing in front of me, I'm just going to walk right around them. Because the only person I'm racist against are racist people. And there is racism here in Oklahoma. We would like to pretend that it doesn't happen or we could say there's no place for it. But there is because there's jerks in all shapes and sizes, they come in all creeds. I've got just about every kind of type of different ethnic background in my family. My son's half Arabic, my mother's half Spanish, my dad's German. I've got nieces and nephews are African-American. So I've got it all. So I don't believe that there's no racism because there is, because there are just people that don't understand it. But with me, that's not how I am. I would just, as far as them trying to keep me from going to the polls or trying to stop me from going to the polls, that's my right, that's my freedom. And I carry my vote and that freedom very dear to my heart, just like I do my flag. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And Charlie, your thoughts on the statements about the Proud Boys and so forth?
Obviously, zero tolerance. If anything, we need to have a police presence there to make sure that everybody gets access to the ballots, to the voting booth. Because no, no, zero tolerance for hate crime, zero tolerance for discrimination, for racism. I mean, you know, I've been, you know, obviously, I've been a victim of, you know, racism throughout my life. And even within the Sheriff's Department, I was told, you know, go back to Mexico. So I have very zero tolerance for that. And, you know, and there's many, you know, there's many samples in Oklahoma where, you know, again, Alfreda Longo, the Black Lives Matter rallies, you know, where, you know, instigators and counter protesters, you know, make their presence known. And we should not tolerate that, not just in Oklahoma, but anywhere in the United States of America or any part of the world.
Okay, thank you. Humbert, what are your thoughts about these concerns about potential, the potential for racial intimidation at the polls? Oops, unmute please.
So. I've had racial intimidation done to me myself, but I'll tell you what, you just work harder. You're an immigrant, you work harder. That's what my parents, they were both immigrants, they came from Mexico legally. They raised us, we all became valedatorians, we all became, I graduated two years early, was in college at 15. My other brother's a doctor, my other brother's, my sister's a scientist. You do two or three times more than they did. When they came to me and said this kind of stuff, I said, you know what, I'm going to make my business even better. And I'm going to help more people and I'm going to help more immigrants and I'm going to hire them. And you do what you're supposed to do. You don't just talk about doing it, you actually do it. And you help, I've helped the Caldean community immensely. But I do also, I don't see color. I actually see people trying to get the American opportunity, especially in the second district that I walk. However, in the second district, there is a big concern that most of the houses that I walked through since I was in the fifth grade, for different politicians and helping for different programs. Everybody's always concerned about the Good Old Boys Network in Oklahoma. And yes, it does exist and yes, it is strong and yes, it does feed a lot of politicians a lot of money. And so I am very concerned about that and I'm hoping that we can kind of break that chain. And instead of having, one of the greatest things that I have in my platform is a citizen-centered government. I think we need to return to citizen-centered government. I know that I've worked with Martin on some cases and some other things. And these are the kinds of things where we can work together and talk about different ways to help different people. But having this top-centric government that's run by only two or three people because they give a lot of donations to people, that's not the way it should work. And also, somebody nods in the background and says, you know, this is how you should vote, this is how you shouldn't vote, that's not the way it should work. It should work to actually come from the citizens. And you know what, I have to give kudos to, I hate to do this. I do have to give kudos to Stephanie because during the Alfreda Longo thing, you were very outspoken about the police and the things that they did. I, on the other hand, actually give a little bit more leeway to the police. I actually work with them, I know that they've actually, I've actually had endorsements from several of them in the past. And I actually enjoy talking to police chiefs, they're actually very, 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 the last couple of them have been minorities and they're actually very, very good people. I think I have 15 seconds left or is.
We are well past time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much Humbert. Martin, let's have your views on this issue.
As far as the voting rights are concerned and intimidation, I find that highly offensive. I don't like the idea of being pushed in one way or another. When I was getting my validation to be on the ballot, I met several people and it was actually sad. I would walk up to someone and ask them to vote for me. And one person would simply say, are you a Republican or a Democrat? Well, I replied a Republican, he said outside. Sad that he never asked me about any issues, what I stood for, what I wanted to accomplish, how I wanted to help, just simply put, this is it. It's so polarized, it's scary. And I think that people, they should really read more. You know, like on my website, it breaks down, shows everything that I believe in and that I want to do. And if someone wants to believe in me, well then perhaps they should read that and then find out. And that's why I agree with Humbert, you know, there's some issues there and that's sad, you know. A lot of my money came from Caldeans. One came from, he owns the Best Restaurant Hotel. And I got the majority of my money from him. And he's an Indian. So, you know, I truly believe in diversity, I truly believe in being fair and I don't believe in intimidation in any way. This is a contest between the six of us and let the best person win, based off of what we talked about tonight and in other events. So that's what I think about that.
Thank you very much. Next question, we'll do in a minute here, a minute round. But I think it's important since we're running in, by districts now in Oklahoma, which is something relatively new, to ask each of you, how long you've lived in District Two and if you have any specific priorities for your section of the city that you would be representing if you win. Stephanie, you're first on this one.
Okay, well, I've lived in Oklahoma basically my entire life. I've lived right on the outskirts, I lived in District Two when I lived over on Madison. But I live in District Two in this, the place that I live in now for almost, not quite a year. And out my back window, I can see all the stuff that happens downtown. There is street races that go on and they're just awful noise pollution. Scared, they set up alarms and scare the kids and people are, you know, it's really bad. We have a lot of the street racing and I don't think a lot of our police officers are aware of that or maybe they could set up something to help that out. That's what I'm seeing, I look out my window. But when I'm walking down the street, I see a lot of, I see our homeless people, which I know a lot of them, that are struggling. I see a lot of things that we could be doing and that I would want to change, like this trash on my street. We need to start having a regular street cleaning and just kind of clean up District Two a little bit. Thank you.
Charlie, your thoughts on, or tell us about how long you've lived in the district? And what specific issue or issues you think are most important in this District Two?
Okay, well, I lived specifically in Oklahoma six years in San Diego, pretty much during, you know, outside of the time I was in the Army, you know. And once I got here, immigrated here, then I've been in San Diego my whole life. But, you know, if you're in San Diego, you're, you know, I have family in Imperial County. So I was in and out, even when I didn't live here, out of Oklahoma, pretty much my whole life. So I think we all going to agree on this. You know, I've been out there almost daily on the streets, talking to people. And everyone, and one, two and three. Clean up the city, make it look better, pick up the trash, make sure the streets are right, the potholes, the lights work, stop signs, signs. You know, homelessness and then public safety. That, you know, almost everyone, that's where, where their, I won't say frustration, but their concern is.
And Charlie, you've been in the district for how long? I know you said six years in Oklahoma, but how long?
Five, five, six years.
Okay.
I think, 2015, I think I got here.
All right, very good, thank you. And Humbert, how long have you lived in the district and what would your priorities be specifically for District Two?
I want to speak about actually living and having a home in the district and not just a business in the district. I've lived in the district since I was four years old. And I actually have lived in Oklahoma my entire life and was born and am an Oklahoma native. I've seen things since FedMart, Gemco, and the highlight of what was going on in Parkway Plaza back in the day. And when Oklahoma was the star, people used to say, what am I going to build something? Of course I'm going to do it in Oklahoma. We need to get back to that. We need to clean up our streets, we need to have a more, less regulation and more freedom, more opportunity. And I start getting the people actually spend their money here in Oklahoma as opposed to going all the way to Fashion Valley and this kind of thing. I have the ideas, I've done it. I think we're ready to go for these things. I'll have to say, the second district though, I think everybody's kind of missing the boat here because I've actually lived there. And I'll tell you, most of the people are concerned about the Bradley Bridge and the Bradley Connection. They're worried about their parking situation in the apartment buildings. They're worried about SROs and what's happening with single resident occupancies. They're worried about having adequate parking in front of their, and having the waste management thing changed to EdCo. They're worried about jobs, security. And I'll tell you one other thing they're worried about. I got a ton of calls at my office from people during COVID and guess who was out there? Code enforcement was out there. The first three weeks of COVID, I got dozens of calls and code enforcement was out there saying, you know what? You have to tear down this fence or move it over six inches or else we're going to fine you $1,200 a day. During COVID, when a wife and a mother and a, I have to hear them crying on the phone because their husband has lost their job and they've lost your job. And I just think that's not the way government should work. You have people that have to have tents and code enforcement's out there saying you have to have.
We're at time, but we're going to be asking about homelessness in the next question, so we'll have more on that one. Martin, tell us how long you've been in the district and what your priorities would be for it.
Well, I've been in the district, I've been in Oklahoma for 20 years. I've been in District Two for just a little bit over a year. That's where I'm at right now. And, you know, as far as my priorities are concerned, I have many, many concerns with the building department zoning, the cost of zoning. One of the things that I want to talk about and deal with is that, as far as zoning is concerned, I want to eliminate the fees. I don't think it's fair to a person, I think it's a privilege for the city to have businessmen come into the city, want to redevelop, change or rezone an area and then be charged for it. And then unfortunately, if there's an issue and or problem, well then they, your money's taken for the processing and then you wind up with nothing. I know the owner of Lulu's Market, he owns a building next door, it's been vacant for a year. He's trying to make it into a distribution center, can't do it because it's not zoned for. It's zoned for a grocery store distribution, you know. So I think there's some difficulties there that I would like to address. And that would be the start of it for me with the city at least, and then permitting fees. I don't like the way that people are treated and I don't like the time delays. And I think there needs some, I think there needs some work. Yeah, they need to get some ideas and now they can streamline a few things.
I'm hearing some feedback, I'm not sure who's that's from, but.
Somebody coughing.
Okay, in the background maybe or something. Michelle, I think we'll let you wrap this one up. How long have you lived in District Two and what would your top priorities be for this district?
Thank you. I've lived in my house currently for 20 years, as of this last July. I've lived in, within a three-mile radius since 1979. And the top three priorities for District Two is public safety, homelessness and crime.
Okay, thank you very much, that was concise, we appreciate that. Let's move on to talk about homelessness. We'll give you up to two minutes because this is a very meaty, meaty issue, important issue to a lot of people. The city of Oklahoma has spent more money trying to address homelessness and help the homeless than any of the other cities in East County. And yet it still has a very high number of homeless compared to other East County areas. So I would like to know from each of you, what is your approach to try to help the homeless? And at the same time, protect residents and businesses from, you know, issues involved with the homelessness, such as sanitation concerns and homeless camps on properties? And also, I'm combining a couple of questions here. We've also had a couple of readers who want to know if you would support, while the East County Transitional Living Center does a good job, it is, the longer-term part of its program is faith-based. Do you think the city should look to support some kind of a long-term program that is not faith-based and that would be open to everybody? Charlie, you're first.
Thank you. Yes, I think the current system, we have set up, current protocols that we have set out for homelessness is the bare minimum. I think it needs to be more proactive. It's not being, it's not enough. You need to be out there, okay, me, you know, I talked to the business owners and they said, no one has approached them about what to do or how they could participate or what their opinion is on the homeless situation. Same thing, the churchgoers, they're like, you know, we don't know, we don't know what's being done with homelessness, you know. And again, I'm out there in the streets almost daily and I see that, that it creates an impact for the city, you know. And it's a concern not just for the livelihood of the homelessness, but also the image. And now with the, it highlights with the COVID-19, the streets are dirty, the sidewalks are dirty. And I just don't see why, a more proactive effort to make sure those sidewalks are sanitized, cleaned somehow. You know, they did that downtown with hepatitis C. Well, why aren't they doing that now with COVID and with, you know, address the areas where the homeless congregate? But what we're doing now is just checking the block, it needs to be done more, house them, provide them what they need so that they can get out of that hole, make, you know, they just want a little step up, a jump start so they can become functional members of society. And that's, when I meet with them, that's what they want. They don't want a handout or a hand-me-down, they want a hand up.
Thank you. Humbert, how would you address the homelessness issue?
I wanted, this is a serious issue and I just wanted, I'm glad you're giving us a little additional time.
Yeah. And I would say, I think our producer, by the way, we'll add to this, but our producer was saying, we want to be sure everybody feels it was fair since there were a couple of questions where people got shorted. So I think I'm going to say that we'll give each person an extra 30 seconds or so that they can use on either this question or a question of their choice. If you want to reserve your time and use more later on something that you feel passionately about or a closing statement, then we'll do that.
That's fair enough, I did want to say, I like Stephanie Harper's cat in the background. Maybe I'll use a few seconds for that. But this is a serious issue and I want to try to get straight to it. You asked me, what would I do? I'll tell you, I've already done it. I've worked with the Homeless Task Force for a few years now and actually was one of the members that was in its inception. So we have over 20 some odd different non-for-profit organizations helping the homeless, depending on if they're a veteran or mental incapacities or drugs or this kind of thing. And then we have also over 60 different businesses that are helping with different facilities and money and everything else. And I actually helped to build the 33,000 square foot Salvation Army building that is a food choice food bank that's open six out of seven days a week because there was a need there. And I volunteered and I spent nine years of my life making that happen. I also worked to try to get jobs in Oklahoma, which resulted in over 300 jobs from Fox Shocks. I've actually helped to try to streamline some of the permitting process. I wish we could do a lot more and I agree with Martin on that. As for the homelessness goes, I also worked on a program that has reunified over 55 families just this year for the Salvation Army. So what we do is we actually contact them more than six times, find out who they are, find out if their families are somewhere else in the country, their families usually are looking for them. We send somebody on a bus, we pay for their ticket and we also send a Salvation Army person with them. They have Salvation Armies over there, they actually help them find a job, housing, and actually get them relocated back with their families who are very happy and we work to relocate them. Reunify them actually, and that's actually been very successful. But there is still a lot of work to do, there's a lot of more things that we can do, there's a lot of things that we still are working on. And I think part of the thing, one of the questions was, what can we do that's not? I am endorsed by Harold Brown, which is the East County Transitional Living Center. They are building extra facilities there, we're trying to do the best that we can there. But I'll tell you, one other thing is that the SROs, I've been trying to be a proponent of SROs for a long time. We just had 300 new SROs on East Elko Boulevard and also on East Main Street. We had another 200 SROs, which are single resident occupancies that help people with transitional housing. So there's much to do. that help people with transitional housing. So there's much to do. And I think a big part of it also is zoning. We have to have administrative zoning, creative zoning to help these people. And now we have to start, stop drawing the magnet here and we have to continue helping them. So there's a lot of good ideas, a lot of great stuff we're doing, so.
Okay, thank you very, very much. Martin, let's hear from you on how you would address the homeless situation.
Okay, well, interestingly enough, I do have a plan and it's completely different. And basically what it does is it takes some monies that you would save, for instance, in your home, so your property taxes. You would get a tax property credit for bringing a person into your home. For that to happen, we would need vetting. We would have to have police control. There would be Zoom meetings with a potential person. So obviously there are people that are beyond help. I'm sorry to say that mentally, they're going to need more help than a home could provide. But that being said, can you imagine the opportunity for someone through vetting? You meet, you're brought into a home, an ADU, whatever it may be, and then you're a part of their life. And then there's training, computer training, and you can get yourself back into a participant in society. And then the person that owns the home, rather than the government taking the money and spending it in different ways that they think would be beneficial, now all of a sudden it's going to the homeowner. That person gets a tax credit. That government goes to them. And they, they're the ones that can really help out and they need the help. Because I'm sure as you many people, taxes are about five grand a year. It's an awful lot of money. Should be nice to get some of it back, helping somebody.
Okay, thank you. Michelle, how would you address homelessness?
Thank you. I have a different perspective. I was a teenager, 1972. I was in eighth grade. We were homeless. We lived, my mother made some bad choices. We lived in a motel and then we lived in a car. I know the embarrassment of having to wear the same clothes, embarrassment of having to take showers at school. So I have a heart for homeless and trying to make their lives better. As an EMT, I interacted with homeless all the time and tried to give them the compassion and the civility that they need. As an adult, I've had homeless live with us for a time that they needed it. I've helped out. As a member of the Alcoa Community Cleanup Group, I've cleaned up after homeless camps. I've seen what they've left over. There are a couple of homeless people in town that I have taken an active interest in and have helped with them. My plan is that we don't need to reinvent the wheel. We have a lot of programs out there. But what we do need is one location so that we have housing, we have training, we have clothing, medical assistance, mental health assistance, drug and rehab assistance, everything in sort of a one-stop shop. We need to find the location to do that and make it happen. I've worked for Home Start, who has homeless programs. And everybody has great ideas. Everybody has great programs, but let's work together and put them all in one location. Thank you.
Okay, it looks like Stephanie may have had a connection issue. So we're going to be watching for her, John, see if she pops back in here in a minute hopefully and reenters, reenters the meeting. Let's see, I lost track because it shifted everybody around here when that happened.
That would answer the question and we're on to the next one.
Is there anybody that didn't answer that question yet? Juan Carlos or Charlie?
First one, I believe.
Okay, so everybody got to answer. That's what I'm making sure of. All right. Let's go on. Actually, I'm going to kick it over to John right now. And John has a couple of business questions that he's going to ask. And I think we can do these in about a minute and a half or less if you can do it, so we can get in as many questions as possible. John, let's hear from you.
I am so excited about that, everyone.
I was going to let you ask, you've got a couple of business questions there, about a minute and a half each, if you can go ahead and go. And I think Michelle was last thought, so I think Humbert would go first on this one.
That's right.
I wanted to spend a few seconds actually saying that it is centralized. The homelessness is actually in the crisis house, we actually have a central location and it goes to the little house and goes Casa Group and it goes to all the other groups. There is a place where it's centralized.
Okay, thank you.
As far as businesses go, what was the question?
John, go ahead.
Thanks. So as we all know, the pandemic has taken a big toll on the economy here. Specifically, what are you going to do to bring more businesses and what types of businesses to Alcoa to help increase foot traffic, help increase commerce? Martin, we'll start with you.
Terrific. So I believe that what's been done in other cities is to close down Main Street. You know, there's always issues of safety, egress fires, so forth and so on. But I really believe that if we could start by just shutting down Main Street and allow the people to go and take advantage of the center section and open their businesses up fully so that they can participate in what they need to to generate the income to survive and get through this. And maybe perhaps if it worked out, let it stay, let it run. Maybe other districts may be interested in doing it. You know, I've seen it and I drive down Main Street. It's absolutely sad. You know, I really think, and I know there'll be some opposition, I know there's issues with fire. I dealt with fire, but there's always a way, there's a will. And I think it would be a great idea and a good way to help out those people, at least in that area, and then let it expand.
Thank you. Michelle, we heard from Martin. He said that he would quarter off Main Street. Do you think that's a good idea? And what kind of businesses would you like to bring?
I'd like to see Main Street open. I think I understand what Martin is trying to say as far as like closing down Main Street and having restaurants come out more into the street. And so that it would be closed off. That would work. My idea for bringing in new businesses, I'd like to see some more specialty shops, maybe a special card shop. We have lots of clothing. We have lots of bars. We have lots of restaurants. We always use another ethnic restaurant. We have lots of grocery stores, little markets. So I think we just need to reduce regulations, reduce the process to getting a license and setting up a business now. We need to streamline it and make it easier.
Thank you so much, Michelle. We'll go now to Charlie. You you heard from Michelle right there. She says she wants to bring more artisanal type. Sounds like cute businesses with the card shops and the rest. How do you think about her, what do you think about her vision and how do you think is best to proceed for Alcoa?
I think I share a tiny bit of your answer. I have a passion for the arts. And I believe if we have, we need galleries, art galleries. I think that's something that we need. I work around that environment and a lot of the artists throughout San Diego County and outside of San Diego County, they're in search of galleries. And I think that's something that would promote a positive image, a better image, you know, for Alcoa. And at the same time, at the same time, modernize. That's another thing that I think we're lacking. So those two, those two areas, I think would definitely create, get things started and then snowball into better and greater things and make Alcoa better and welcome. You know, bring in not just people that want to do business here, but people that will come in, see Alcoa and and, you know, buy things and boost the economy in Alcoa.
Thank you so much. And we'll end with you, Humbert. Your challenger just said that wants to bring in more artists and cultural type events. At the same time, we know that that often leads to gentrification. One needs to only go as far as Barrio Logan to see that as the case. Where do you stand on the vision for Alcoa's business future?
Well, in some cases you see things like Little Italy also, which is a gentrification, but it's a successful one. You can have something like a Middle Eastern community kind of a thing that's more formal with waterfalls and that kind of thing. But I would, if you want me to answer directly about Juan's statement, bring it all in. My company is a design drafting architectural firm. And we actually do have another company that's in Alcoa that actually does construction development, loans and this kind of thing. We chose to base our company in Alcoa because East County is great. Alcoa is fantastic. Other people need to learn it. And I'll tell you how you do it. You do it like I did with Fox Shocks. You talk to the CEOs. You take, bring them out here. You take them to the desert. You take them to the places. You introduce them to the Chamber of Commerce. You introduce them to all the groups that I belong to and you make them a family member of Alcoa and before they know it, they love the place. So this is how you do it. But I'll tell you what else you have to do. You have to get rid of a lot of regulation. There's too much regulation.
Humbert, we are at time.
Okay.
Appreciate, I appreciate the enthusiasm. Stephanie, I don't know if you were able to hear the question, but we've been talking about visions for Alcoa. Everyone wants to see, you know, more cultural events, kind of more boutique shops. Do you agree with that? And I'm curious because no one's talked about this and this leads into our next question to Parkway Plaza. Should there be more big box shops or more corporate shops in Alcoa?
Well, I was raised in Alcoa, so I went to the mall all the time. I was a mall rat, I guess you would call it. I remember Farrell's and I was at the AMC all the time down there at Parkway Bowl. We had Family Fun Center. We had things that you could go and do. We've taken those things away from, from Alcoa. We don't have the Farrell's anymore where you can go and go to have a good time for a birthday party. Or we don't have the Boomers or the Family Fun Center like we used to with the water slides and things like that. We got to give people a reason to want to come into Alcoa. We're a beautiful city full of diversity. They could go to this part of town or this part of town. We need to utilize what we have. We need to utilize the Performing Arts Center, get that going again, get that opened up. Then make that one of the best places for people to go in the East County. That's the place to go to watch your shows and have a lot of innovative things. Bring our children into bringing people into our city. I know that we're trying to be an automotive city, like all the, you know, car lots that we have, but if we're going to do that, let's help the little car lot guys out, put them out there and give them a little bit more gumption to get their businesses going.
Oh, sorry, Stephanie. Go ahead and finish. I didn't mean to interrupt.
Somebody wants to start up and open a small business. Wonderful. I think we do really good.
Thank you so much. I have two, Miriam, just stay with me here. I have two rapid fire questions before we get to the Parkway Plaza.
We've got to be careful on time, John. So what were they? Go ahead.
Just very briefly, yes or no, Unarius, we all know the building that's down downtown. Should that be designated a historical landmark? I've heard some people recently talking about it because it's brought in so much kind of unique attention. Let's have a fun question in there. We'll start with Michelle.
I think we should keep Unarius. I've walked by there. I've been inside the building. The lady who used to cut my hair in the 90s was a member there. And the Mother Goose Parade, the car would go down the street and everybody knew what it was. Sure, why not?
Thank you so much. Humbert, Unarius designated a landmark.
The question?
The Unarius Building, which is healthy home. Would you designate that a landmark because it's become such a cultural?
Yeah, sure. Why now? You know, I'm a member of the Historical Society. I think we could probably help with that. We've done a couple of great ones, but yeah, I mean, it was on, it was on that TV show too.
I just.
With the flying saucers and everything.
Martin, Unarius, historical landmark or not?
Yes, I love observing things. I'm a builder. I hate tearing things down. So I would be all in and preserve, maintain, keep it going.
Charlie?
I'm not opposed to it. I think it's a golden opportunity to reinvent Alcoa, to move forward. We can bring in, meet with investors in the community and bring in galleries, sports centers, civic center, stores, museums, affordable housing. It's prime realty. So the, you know, the opportunities are just endless.
Thank you. Stephanie, to end with you, Unarius, is it, is it a historical, is it of historical importance to Alcoa?
Is what an, I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Yes, Unarius, the building, the Unarius Building in Alcoa. Is it a historical landmark or not? We, I know some.
Okay, yeah, I've seen that place ever since I was a little kid and I never really knew what it was. I knew it had cool pictures in the front of the store. Heard something about Tom Cruise or something like that. He believes in that kind of stuff.
We don't want to start, we don't want to.
All I'm saying is that I believe, I guess it could be a historical thing for somebody who's, that is, I don't know.
If you don't know enough about it, that's okay too.
Before we get to this question, I want to kind of keep this short too. Very kind of yes and no. And if you, if you want, you can go into it about your reasoning, but please keep it to 30 seconds. We'll start with Martin. Martin, should Parkway Plaza be developed, turned into a residential area? Yes or no? And 30 seconds of why.
No, and it's gotten too big. As a building inspector, I know what's going on in there and the storage that they wanted to do and that they're doing now. It's just getting too commercialized. I think it's too big. The store is too big to begin with and it's still too big.
Thank you so much, Stephanie. What do you, the Parkway Plaza situation?
Yeah, and I just want to jump in and add some context for those who may not be familiar that the mall did sell. And there's some question about what the new owners want to do with it. The Wall Street Journal had an article that suggested that they may not want it to be a regional mall. They may want to tear it down, do something else. And, but the city council has a say so about that. And so the question really, I guess, is what do you think, you know, should or shouldn't be considered for the future of Parkway Plaza? So just for those who may not be familiar, go ahead.
I believe that Parkway Plaza is a very vital organ in our community. It was very, it wasn't that big when we had the Woolworths and everything there, but it was enough to where people wanted to go shopping. Maybe some people wanted to build it up to one of those nice big old fashioned malls where they had the two levels or whatever. But I know that we've got some kind of construction going on underneath it, a storage units or something like that. I don't really think that's going to work out. But I would want to keep it in Alcoa. I definitely think that we should keep our mall. It's a place where people go to walk around, just, just to walk around the mall, just to get out of the sun, get some nice air conditioning. Most of our, a lot of our senior citizens, our children, we feel safe in there. I think we should keep it.
Thank you. Michelle?
Parkway Plaza, yes, it needs to remain. Now, if they want to add a second story and add say artist lofts or recording studios or maybe a little section with some, you know, higher end apartments. Why not? Keep it there, but keep Parkway Plaza. It's a cool zone for seniors. It's a walking area for seniors and young moms. Yes, keep Parkway Plaza.
Humbert?
I would say that my business is actually in Parkway Plaza. But I would say there's no new construction going on downstairs. It's actually the existing Sears area. So as far as it goes, I would, I actually spoke to some of the people at JLL and Starwood. And I actually called some of the new owners. So I'm trying to get some more information because I'm getting mixed information from all three. I know that Miriam brought the story. I'm glad about that. I would not allow it to, to change the zoning. But however, I would make the zoning easier and I would do something like a UTC where you have mixed use and that kind of thing.
Thank you so much.
That would be Parkway Plaza and I actually allow other businesses that are service oriented and are apartments condos.
Thank you. An interesting thing I learned today, by the way, from the city manager is that actually the new owners don't own quite all of the mall. They don't own Macy's and they don't own the Sears building. And there was something else in there. But anyway, so there is a possibility that, you know.
Charlie, your last one to weigh in.
Yes, definitely. Keep the mall, reinvent it, bring in investors, the owners, community. And, and, and bring in those, those areas that we talked about, galleries, sports, community center. It's just a golden opportunity for, to make it better and provide more assets to the community, have, you're not just Alcoa, but everyone in San Diego County and even outside of San Diego.
Thank you so much. There was a real, one last quick business question. There was a study recently by the New York Times showing that the United States has lost $16 trillion, trillion with a T, over the past 50 years because of racial segregation and racial discrimination. Last night, we heard President Trump refuse to endorse, or pardon me, to condemn white nationalism and endorse a transfer of power that is peaceful. This has become top of mind in East County. I've been reading message boards all day. I've been seeing the back and forth. Where do you stand on this issue of condemning white supremacy? Where do you stand on this issue of condemning white supremacy? And I really kind of, I really want to know how you felt while you watched it and, and, and what you, what you thought. Keep it to about 30 seconds. Basically, I'm asking for your reaction to the failure to condemn white supremacy last night in the debate. We'll start with you, Martin.
Very good. Well, I definitely condemn it. There's no place for it. I, I find it very upsetting that people can't just be honest. So here we have the five of us talking and we've all been honest. We're not hiding anything. We all have an opinion. And I think that's good and fair. And for them to be on stage and not to clearly identify the issues and the problems and the feelings that they have is wrong. And I think that's mistaken. I didn't like it.
Thank you so much. Charlie?
Yes, zero, again, zero tolerance. I've been very passionate my whole life and, and more so, you know, my experience is dealing with the, you know, the population within the correctional system in San Diego County. Zero tolerance, no, you know, I have firsthand knowledge of who, who some of the members are with, you know, with white supremacy, Nazi low riders, you know, and the list goes on and on. And so I have very, no, I have zero tolerance for that. Strong advocate of diversity. El Cajon is very diverse and we need to be proud of that and we need to promote that.
Thank you. Humbert, what's your stance on this? And how did you feel when you heard the President of the United States unable to?
I felt it needed to be clarified. He did clarify today. I did also not like the fact that Joe Biden did not denounce Antifa. I think both of them are paralyzed. There's no, there is no, 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 no reason for, for having white supremacy. And I think it's not just racism, it's white supremacy. I'm not taking money from the Good Old Boys Network. I want everybody to know that. Others are. I don't think it should. And I'm going to get a lot, a lot, a lot of terrible things done to me and my family. My signs are being taken down and all this other kind of stuff. And it's not just the Catholic churches. I am a Catholic, by the way, and I do support all sorts of great diversity that El Cajon always has been. I've been here my entire life. I know that we used to have the boat people. We used to have the Asian people. We had the people from Iran. And it's been a great place for people to plant their seed and then grow.
Humbert, I just want to make sure I understand you clearly. You dispute the fact that President Trump refused to denounce white nationalism yesterday.
No, I said that I don't agree with it. I don't think there's any room for white nationalism, but he did try to back. He did try to clarify that today. And I didn't see any clarification from Joe Biden about Antifa. And Antifa is just as bad.
Okay. I needed, I needed to make sure I understood where you stood on white nationalism. Michelle, you've heard the question. How did you feel about it? And, and what is your response?
I think the president should have denounced white power. I don't believe that we should have any tolerance for any type of racism, period.
Thank you. I, okay. Stephanie?
I have to agree with Michelle. I don't believe that there's racism. It has a place in our government. The law needs to be blind and not deaf. And the government should be the same way. We need to, no, no white, no white people are better than anybody else. No, Latino people are better than anybody else. We're all the same. When you take, when you turn off the lights, we're all the same. So.
Thank you. Miriam, thank you so much, everyone.
Did everyone answer? I lost track. Everybody got an answer on that one? Okay, great. Thank you. Let's move on. And I want to ask everybody, I think we can probably do this one in 30 seconds or so, but moving on to the arts. The city invested a lot to reopen the East County Performing Arts Center, now known as Magnolia, under the management of Live Nation. And then the pandemic forced the shutdown again. So I'd like you each to, to let us know, will you commit to continue city support of the Magnolia under Live Nation's management? Make sure that we can continue to have this, the theater as a community theater, once live shows are allowed to resume. I've completely lost track. Whose turn is it to go first, John?
I'm sorry, that's with Michelle.
I think it's mine. Okay. By all means, I love the arts. I promote the arts and let's do more with the arts. If we don't have live shows, let's, let's, let's open up that space for, for galleries, you know, with limited, you know, space, maintaining safe space and masks and, and have a gallery opening, you know, if not daily, at least once a week, we can keep things going. There's definitely, you know, we can keep it going, yes.
Thank you. Stephanie?
Well, I know here in District Two, we just got done modeling the El Cajon Valley High School. So we took down the little theater. I believe that our children have a lot of talent in District Two. And I believe that when we're not doing live shows, we could maybe teach our children, since we don't have the little theater anymore, to run a stage, to do soundboard, to maybe get interested in something that they might pursue in their lifetime. I think that the arts is great and we should utilize it in any way we can. I fought to keep it open and not let it become a hotel or church. So I'm very, very adamant about keeping the arts in El Cajon, although I didn't like the new name. That's okay.
Very good. Humbert, how about you?
Well, I was born in El Cajon and raised in El Cajon with my five other siblings and my grandmother. And I raised my three girls in El Cajon and now I'm raising my fourth one. And I'll tell you what, the arts and artistry are the most important thing. I love the Olive Wee Horse Museum. I love the arts. And I like the fact that we have that here and I would continue to support it. And I would support more, more of that kind of thing. The Animal Shelter also is something great, but I would also continue to support the arts.
Thank you. Martin, your views on the Magnolia?
Well, I have a different perspective. So I knew what went on there as far as the building was concerned. I know about the, the budget issues. There was way over budget. There's still some issues with it for egress on the inside. I, I don't like the idea of the name change. I don't like the idea of having another district use it. It's for El Cajon. It was called Ekpak. And now it's the Magnolia and they're trying to trap in other monies. They've got it to the point now where I believe it costs $5,000 for an opening to have that, you know, set up so that people can use it. You think small schools and small things can get there and, and come up with that kind of money to use that thing for a night? I, I think there needs to be going some thought into this and, and find out what happened, why it happened and see if we can get it corrected. So that it goes back to the people of El Cajon since they paid for it.
So to be clear, you want to keep it as a theater, but you think that it should be less money for community groups that want to use it somewhat other than Live Nation?
Yeah. And I'd love to see you go back to Ekpak too, you know, East County Performing Arts Center. I'd love to see that.
Okay, thank you. Michelle?
I love the Magnolia. I absolutely love it. I've been to 10 shows there. I remember when it was Ekpak, I've actually performed on Ekpak stage and back probably in the 80s. It's a great venue and currently it's an awesome place to go see a concert. I think they should keep it. I love the name. We anticipated making a profit on the, the Magnolia in about a year. And we actually met that goal in December after first four months. So I think we're doing wonderful with it. I think it's going to make great money for El Cajon. It's bringing us a diverse number of acts. Everything from ranchero music to caldean, to comedy, to rock. Best concert I ever went to was Which One's Pink? And so I want to see them continue operating with Live Nation. I think it's a great partnership.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's move on and talk about housing, which is another huge issue. California and the county faces a shortage of housing, especially affordable housing. And Sandag has some mandates now where they're trying to require each city to build its fair share of affordable housing. So I would like to ask each of you what your priorities are for housing in El Cajon. And also, if you could briefly touch on how you would address complaints, this, we've had several readers send in variations on questions about issues of habitability of some of these older apartments where there's persistent issues with things like mold and bed bugs. So kind of a two-pronged question there, how you would deal with affordability, or if that's your priority for, for, for building housing? And how would you address the habitability? And we'll let you go up to two minutes on this one because it is a, you know, compound question there. Stephanie?
Well, I think affordable housing should be just that, affordable. And if we have owners and property owners just raising the rents anytime they want to and it's going sky high, I remember I was able to afford an apartment, take care of all my stuff. You can't do that anymore as a single parent. So we need to make housing affordable. There needs to be a rent cap. At least, at least on our mobile home parks. So our seniors, citizens who aren't fixed incomes, don't become the next homeless on our streets. That's what it's going to end up being. The only way you solve homelessness is you give these people homes. Can't give somebody a home, but we can make homes affordable. And so that could be something the city could be working on. We do have a certain thing that we have to turn in to HUD every year, showing them what we have been doing and that's the different things that we are doing to comply with the state's affordable housing codes. And we use a lot of the same things over and over and over on those things, things that have been, projects that have already been taken care of, that we're still using on that, that, so we're not doing anything new. We just got done with the Sunshine Avenue, South Sunshine. That was something that was done and that was awesome, great thing. But I think it could be a little bit more affordable. As far as like taking care of the older structure, the older buildings that are, have bedbugs and mold and stuff like that. If we could get some of our, our El Cajons businesses that do that kind of thing in there to do it, that would be a great thing. We could.
Thank you. Humbert, your thoughts on housing?
I think you're discussing, are we, were we talking about the RENA numbers?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Are we discussing the RENA numbers? So the state has a regional housing needs assessment numbers that are required. So those numbers are astronomical, especially in El Cajon. But I think we've, I've been a real proponent of the single, the SROs. Yeah, so successfully they're starting to happen. So like I said, we have 300 units in one area and 200 units in another. And those are, those are very low income, just transitional living from what, from just getting to homelessness and to getting credit to be able to have other things. I think we need to do both. I think we also have to do regular housing. But I see ordinances that are just overlapping, overlapping, overlapping. And like I say, we have a company that does permits and processing. And I hate to say it, but El Cajon is very difficult. There are some height requirements that are just crazy. And if you just want to put an architectural fenestration somewhere, you have to go through an entire planning commission situation. If you have to remodel something, and there's a lot of ordinances there. I know, I don't want to get into the weeds and get crazy about them, but I would start actually by actually eliminating some and making it easier for developers and for homeowners to remodel, fix, correct their buildings, clean up and this kind of thing. I also see a lot of people that want to actually give and donate homes or donate complexes to the elderly or the homeless. They can't because of the new environmental regulations and the regulations and the ordinances of El Cajon, because you'd have to basically tear down the building and build a new one. So we should fix that.
Thank you very much. Martin, can you speak to the housing issue?
Yes, I can. So the one thing that I would love to see is to be able to do a PDU or JDU, which is either converting the garage and/or building an additional home onto your property, release the restrictions, not, not be so confining on the setbacks, make some allowances so that that can expand and happen. And then, you know, as far as the apartments, we did have an inspection program. And there was a person, LC Wright, that headed up that division. But since they made some movement and removed some people out of the building farm, building inspectors in particular, they now have stopped the program, which is a real shame, because he would go through, evaluate and then tell people, the owners, what needed to be done to bring it up and get rid of this mold, these other issues. So it's a shame, but they were working on it for a while.
Thank you. Michelle?
El Cajon's doing a lot of building right now. When we were out driving around the city, my husband and I noticed there's a lot of houses being built. And what I'd like to see is more housing being built, reduce the impact weeks, so that it makes it easier for homeowners or for builders to build a home. But I think what I'd like to see done is maybe some workshops with mortgage brokers and lenders to teach people, financial planners, to teach people how to be a first time home buyer. I didn't own a home until 2000. So I was not a 20-year-old trying to buy a home. And it was very difficult. But I think there's a certain sense of pride with homeownership. And so, yes, we do need apartments, but I believe that we also need some good homes that people can raise their family in and stay for 20, 30, 40 years. And so I'd like to see some, I'd like to see more education on how to buy a home. I've been a loan processor in the past. I've worked with mortgage brokers, worked with real estate agents. And, you know, it can be done. You just need to educate people on how to save money and how to get into their home for the first time and get some pride.
Thank you very much. And Charlie, your thoughts on housing and habitability?
I disagree with Humbert. I don't, I don't, deregulation, it's the wrong way to go. I don't know if he's looking at, you know, his donors' self-interest with that answer, but that's the wrong way to go. We need to, we need to make sure that we have modern homes, modern El Cajon, energy efficient. We've got a lot of empty lots we can take advantage of and bring in building companies, builders who can take advantage of that and, and create a, not just homes, but bring in an industry with, with, you know, with new technologies and modernizing El Cajon. And that's where we need to go, not deregulation.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. None of you touched on the, the issue about the mold and so forth. But just quickly, do you think there's quick, I guess, you know, 15 seconds, 30 seconds each, but can you touch on the issue of landlords who are renting out places where they've maybe done a brief remediation and the problem comes back and tenants are being charged like, you know, a thousand bucks for getting rid of roaches or mold or something that was there before? Maybe it's more code enforcement officers, maybe it's, maybe we, maybe someone wrote in and suggested legislation, a law that would require they guarantee habitability for a certain number of months. But just quickly, does anybody have an idea on that? We'll just go in the same order, but I think Humbert, or we'll let Humbert take that one first.
Number one, Juan, when a shadow is considered a pollutant, you've gone too far with your regulations. Okay? So I, the other thing is, I would say that yes, the code enforcement can do a good job here with the mold and the issues. I've seen people that have actually called me and said that they don't even have hot water and they're, and these people are basically slum lords. I'd rather code enforcement work on that than people that are trying to put up tents during COVID and trying to code enforce them for not having adequate engineering for their tents during code enforcement. During COVID.
Okay, Martin, how about you?
Actually, I did say something about it. We had an inspection program with the city that I was able to watch over two and a half years. And they just, one code enforcement man quit. He retired. Another one was let go. And now the one that's there is going to be transferred to doing inspections. They've stopped the program. There's a program in place. They were going street by street, apartment by apartment. And now it's ended, which is a shame. So we did have something. It's just now gone. That was from the city.
Okay, Michelle, on habitability?
I think that landlords need to be held accountable for apartments that, or houses that are in bad condition. Code enforcement, I believe we already have laws in place for these types of issues. And so we just need to enforce them. I would have to enter it. I don't know enough about it.
Okay, thank you. And Charlie?
Yes, I, well, I was, I was a victim of mold. There was a leak in a rental unit about 10 years ago underneath the concrete. And, and we need to hold rental property owners accountable by all means. And maybe my own personal experience makes me biased, but I had to take him to court. I had to go to a county recorder office to find out who the owner was. They didn't show up to court. And even after I was awarded a monetary compensation, I had to wait almost a year for those funds to become, you know, to go to my pocket. So, so I think this, this process needs to be faster, quicker and, and on behalf of the renter, by all means, yes.
Thank you. Stephanie, what are your thoughts on the habitability issue?
I have to agree with Martin. I would think that maybe we could do it like they do Section 8 before you. Section 8. Before you move into any place for Section 8, you have to have an inspection to make sure that everything's up to par and that all the water's running, there's no bedbugs, there's no roaches, all that kind of stuff. If we could have maybe a line that some people could call to the city and say, look, this is what's going on with me. My landlord's doing this and this and that. Can you guys come down here, do an inspection? And then have an inspection come and do that. And if it's not up to par for those people, then they, you know, hit them where it hurts in their pocketbooks. And they'll start picking up the pace and doing what's right for their tenants. So-
Good, thank you. We have the next couple of questions about a couple of specific controversies that have arisen in this race. Humbert, the first one is a discrepancy, I'd like to ask you to clear up about discrepancies in the documents regarding your residency in the district. I understand you've been, from the registrar, that you've been registered to vote on North Molleson in the district since 2012. As you mentioned, you've been in it a long time. But when you applied for business license renewal in May, you listed your home address on Falcon Street, which is not in the district. Your wife has, owns a home where the homeowner exemption on file with the tax assessor's office is also the house on Falcon Street, although she recently re-registered to vote on Molleson. So can you clear up, can you just explain that discrepancy for us and where, you know, you and your lovely wife, you sent a beautiful photo of your wife and daughter, which residence you're living in right now?
We're living in the 1717 North Molleson House. And we've lived there. I do not know why, because we actually have the document that shows that we registered our businesses in 1717 North Molleson. So I'm wondering who's trying to pull a fast one and say that we actually registered as 1400 Falcon Lane. We never did that. We live in 1717. We've always lived in 1717.
Okay.
And I'm the person that actually was born and is a native of the second district. That's the whole reason why I'm running in the second district, because I see a lot of people that have come out from out of the second district. And I said, no, I've lived there my entire life. I want to be there.
Okay.
Now, my wife does own a condo there in the other area, and we do rent that. And we do have that. So, but-
But she has the homeowner exemption.
I also have my two businesses.
She did claim the homeowner exemption, though. And according to the tax assessor, that's under penalty of perjury that you stated. It's a primary residence to take that. So was that an error with the, with the-
Oh, we did stay in that, in that for the allotted time that needed to be there, for when we first purchased the condo, before we started renting. Yes.
All right. We'll, we'll be following up on that. Thank you very much. And I don't, I don't think that was an issue for the other candidates.
I have a question. No, I have a question.
Okay.
I have a question. Yes, I do have a question. I believe that we need representation of somebody who lives in our district. And it's from my understanding that Mr. Cabrera's parents live on North Molleson and not him. If, I would like to see some kind of rental agreement or some kind of, something stating with, that his name is on that property. Because I don't think that it's fair to the voters to be having somebody on the ballot that doesn't live in our district and doesn't understand what we're going through.
Mr. Cabrera will give you a chance to respond to that.
I need to, I don't want to get into my family issue, but my mom is actually very, she needs care. And so I don't want you guys to be slamming my mother because she needs care. And so she-
Just anything about your mother.
Live in the house, and we do live with her. Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. The other, the other issue, very briefly, on, that's been raised, is that there was apparently somebody in the race, not in the race, but somebody out there, put up a fake website in the name of Michelle Metzl, that apparently was intended to provide some deceptive information about voters. So I'd just like to ask the other candidates if you can attest whether, you know, assure the voters whether you knew anything about that, or anybody at your campaign had anything to do with it. And, you know, what do, how do you think the appropriate remedy would be if it were found that someone here did that? Charlie?
Yes, I have no knowledge of any of that. This is news to me. I, you know, I wish her the best. And I don't know how she operates or who was behind that. I cannot say, I cannot comment beyond that.
All right, thank you. Stephanie?
I had heard about it. I think it's, I think it's wrong. I think it's mudslinging for anybody to have to do that if they think that they can't win on their own, you know, morals and their own standards and their own education, then they shouldn't be running in the race. I think that low blows like that is just unacceptable in elections. And that's what gets people in trouble.
Thank you. Humbert?
I agree with Juan. But I really didn't understand the article very much. I read it very briefly.
Yeah, it wasn't ours. It was, I think, the Union Tribune or someone-
Yeah, the Union Tribune. So I didn't really comprehend if it was really her, honestly, or if it was somebody else.
We'll give Michelle a second to speak to that. But Martin, you're, can you comment on this first, please?
Yes, I can. I did read about it in the UT. And I didn't put a lot of effort into, you know, studying it. I had no part of it. I first found out about it when I read about it, when it did come out in the UT. And it's a shame, you know, we live in a world now where things like this can be done easily by people. It's just not fair.
Okay. Michelle, do you have anything to add?
No. The site has been taken down. I think someone attempted to make me look not as conservative as I am. And that's just not me. Most people don't know me. They don't know who I am. They don't know what I stand for. And the site was opposite of, so I'm just glad it's taken down. It was picked up by, when it came out, I received texts and phone calls asking me, what is this about? What do you talk about? I was interviewed by the UT and was picked up by four other news sites.
Yeah. Thank you. I can imagine how distressing-
Can't we ask if Black Lives Do Matter?
Well, actually, you know what, Humbert, since you brought that up, one of the things that I think for people of color, such as myself, that was so disturbing about this redirection, this mirrored site, is that it suggests there's something wrong with Black Lives Matter. So it suggests there's something wrong with Black Lives. So Humbert just asked the question. And if everyone can weigh in very, very quickly, I think that that's fair on this issue. The August 14th article is, is very concerning, mainly because it suggests there's something wrong with the premise.
What, to clarify for people that didn't see it, the site, I guess, among other things, attributed, I can't remember exactly, a viewpoint of Michelle's on Black Lives Matter that may not have accurately, may or may not have accurately reflected her viewpoint and various other things. But it, anyway, go ahead. I'll leave you. If you jump in and answer the question real quick. Michelle?
What do you want me to say? It wasn't me. I'm not sure he understands the question.
I'm sorry, John, can you be more clear on it, or?
Sure. Black Lives Matter is the belief that Black Lives Matter. Do Black Lives Matter? Michelle?
Yes.
Okay.
Humbert?
Yes, they do. Very, very much so.
Martin?
I would agree. And I'd also add, you know, all lives matter. I do believe in Black Lives Matter. And it's, it's good. But, you know, I have concern for everyone. Does that make sense?
That, that has to be pressed before, I'm sure. Thank you.
Charlie?
Yes, Black Lives Matter. And not only that, I want every officer and every police department and deputy sheriff to say it, believe it, live it, love it. Black Lives Matter. And right now, that's not the case in those departments.
Okay. Stephanie?
I'm agreeing with Martin. Every life matters to me, everybody's life, whether you're poor, you're rich, you're white, yellow, black, it doesn't matter. Your life matters.
Okay, thank you. COVID-19 has negatively impacted the budgets of many cities, El Cajon included, with added costs to address health concerns. And as we touched on, lower revenues from sales taxes with businesses that have been closed or at lower capacity. So I'd like to ask each of you, if you are elected, what would your top budget priorities be? And also, if there's any more CARES Act money coming in, what would your priority be for using any new relief funds? So two-pronged, number one budget priority, and two, how you might disseminate any future relief funds. Martin?
Okay, well, as far as the budget's concerned, you know, I had made mention of closing down Main Street. And, you know, and not that that's going to save the budget or give us everything that we need. But we do need to generate, you know, tax revenue. That was another issue that I made about zoning. If we can reduce some of the zoning, change it without major costs, then some businesses could open up. I mean, reference to Lulu's Market. So we need to generate income by reducing the issues to go and comply with the city, meaning easier processing. And that's what I would say. What was the second question? That was part one.
About if there were any further CARES Act funding for coronavirus relief, how would you prioritize using that?
Well, to any businesses that it could go to, to help out, to keep them open. I mean, that would make sense to me, because this is going to end, and then soon, when it does, we're going to get going. We just got to be prepared for it. That's all.
Thank you. Michelle, your views on budget priority, your top budget priority, and how you would, you, how you would prioritize any future COVID relief funds?
Top budget priority is public safety. And any future CARES funding, we need to look at it and make sure that those who have not received before gets a little bit of heart. But really, what it comes down to, open things up. If you can go to Target, if you can go to Walmart, and there are restrictions there, and the mom and pop shop, the little restaurant, they can open with their restrictions, then we wouldn't need any more funding, because everybody will be back to work. Yes, it'll be a little bit of a reduced attendance. And we can maybe divide the funds up a little bit, but open things up and let people go back to work. We've had a 600 increase, a 600% increase, at least, in suicide calls, domestic violence. So open things up and not too far. Sorry.
Okay. Thank you. And Charlie, your priorities for the budget and for COVID relief, if any?
Priorities for budget, make sure that we, that the city employees are taken care of. And, and, and I, and I say that cautiously. Let's not, you know, use whatever it is that we have available. Just, just throw it out there, you know. So, so, but make sure that we take care of them. And two, in relation to COVID, we need to do what they did in downtown San Diego with hepatitis, cleaning the sidewalks. I don't see that done. Okay. Two, virtual learning is very difficult. Why don't we have a Wi-Fi station on the high rental areas, so that, you know, people are not fighting for Wi-Fi signal and the best virtual learning device, you know, that works with Wi-Fi. So, so I think those two would go a long ways to show the community, show El Cajon, that we are doing what's best for the city, for the community.
Thank you very much. And Stephanie, your priorities for budget and any future COVID funds?
Okay, well, our budget needs been relying on employee pension, the employee pension funds to balance out our budget instead of paying the CalPERS as the benefits were earned. So now our city is in really big debt because of that. And we're 205 million, something like that. It's up in the millions. And we're at a 7% rate of that. So I think maybe a way to cut down on our budget is not giving a cost of living increase to our employees that are already making over $20,000 a month. That's, they're making as much as some people take a whole year to make. Maybe we could maybe cut that down, because I don't think everybody, all the employees are getting the cost of living raised, like the, the high-budget employees are. They're getting a raise every single year. That's costing them the same money. We could maybe take that down a little bit to five years, you know. We could bring a lot of revenue back to our city like that. I think that we need to balance our budget and not balance it to their, to the way it has been, but balance it to where we're getting this backup, where we're using some of our revenue, and we're starting to make money again instead of losing it.
Thank you, Stephanie. And Humbert, what would your number one budget priority be? And how would you expand any future CARES Act funding?
Well, the budget, as far as it goes, Stephanie is actually correct in a lot of her speaking. And, and I remember Stephanie and I were actually at the city council one day, were attempting to give themselves a raise. And, you know, I have to applaud Stephanie again. But, you know, we've been there. We're, we're part of the watching, seeing what's going on. We just haven't shown up at the last second. And so we kind of can speak to that, those items. And we actually asked them a couple of years ago to take a look at this. And I'm surprised this is coming up. As far as the CARES Act spending, I think we need to make sure that the people that are used to get the CARES Act spending the very first go-around, actually are using it for what they were, said they were using it for, and then we can disperse it properly.
Okay, thank you very much. We're gonna have one more, a real short question, and then we're gonna go on to the closing statements. So I would like to ask each of you, in about 30 seconds or so, what endorsements you have that you're most proud of? I lost track again. Whose turn is it to go first? I see Humbert went last, so it must be, I think it's Charlie's turn to go first. Go ahead.
Yeah. Okay, the one that I'm most proud of is Estela Villas Rios, candidate for City Council District 4. We have a, we have an incredible time. We're, we're doing really well. And a lot of traction on what's best, you know, candidacy and what's best for El Cajon, the city of El Cajon and the people out there. So, so I'm very proud about that. I, I, you know, it puts a smile to my face 24 hours of the day.
Thank you. Stephanie, your endorsement?
Well, my, my most proud endorsement is from Planned Parenthood. They're a great organization. They have done so much work out in the community. I'm so proud of that endorsement. I'm also proud of another endorsement from the San Diego Construction and Trades Building Commission or Council. I'm very proud of that. That's my second time having theirs. Run Women Run. And that's my second time having their endorsement. And I've got the endorsement of the San Diego County Democratic Party for the second year, too.
Okay, thank you very much, Stephanie. Humbert, what endorsements are you most proud of?
Yeah, I have the endorsement of Senator Joel Anderson, Pastor Harold Brown, Councilman Bob McClellan, Carl DeMaio, Pacific Southwest Association of Realtors, Latin American Political Association, and the Latin Police Officers Association. But I'll tell you what, the ones that I'm most proud of is the pages and pages of the everyday citizen, the Caldeans, the African-Americans, the, everybody that makes up El Cajon, the, the, the people, the World War II veterans, the, the people that are the bus drivers and the school teachers and the, and the, the people that live in the second district and they're just struggling to make ends meet. Those are the ones that I'm very much most proud of.
Thank you very much. Michelle, or I'm sorry, Martin, I didn't mean to skip you there. Martin, what endorsements are you most proud of?
Well, interesting that you asked. I just got confirmation from Daryl. I said that he's endorsing me. Yes, that's very good. And he's a great guy.
Thank you. Michelle, how about you?
I think the most, I think the endorsement that I'm most proud of is the El Cajon Firefighters Association. I also appreciate the endorsement from the El Cajon Police Department or the Police Officers Association. I also have San Diego County Gun Owners Association, the Mobile Home Owners Association. Let's see. And the county assessor, Ernest J. Jonenberg, my family, my neighbors.
Okay.
They're all special to me. This is my first time in politics, so all of this is very special to me.
Very good. And I love Stephanie's cat over there. These Zoom cats are great. I really want to thank all of our candidates before we go to the closing statements. You know, it's so important in this era of COVID, when you can't go out and hold events and the public can't, can't meet you face to face very much. It's hard to even go precinct walking. So it's really important, and I think that the people of El Cajon are very fortunate to have some choices, to have, you know, all of these candidates seem like they've been very involved in the community. They're very concerned. They've learned a lot about the issues. And so it's really nice for the public to be able to have some, some clear choices and know where you stand on all of the important issues facing El Cajon. So with that, we're going to go to closing statements. You can each take a minute to tell us why you think you'd be the best person to represent El Cajon. And also, I'd like to tell you, take, you can take an extra 15 seconds and tell us what you think is the best thing about living in El Cajon, so we can live on a, and on a positive note about the city known as the Valley of Opportunity. Stephanie, you're first.
Great. Well, I think that I'm the best person for El Cajon, because I'm a normal citizen that likes to go out there. And I fight for what I believe in, what I believe is right. And if I know it's wrong, I'm going to stand up and fight for it. I fight for everybody that I know. I help everybody that I know. I've got a loving heart. I'm a warm, wonderful person. I have a great personality and beautiful smile. I know that I would be the best person to sit up there, because I will listen. I like to listen. I like to understand where other people are coming from. I don't believe that you judge somebody until you've walked a day in their shoes. You have to be from El Cajon to understand El Cajon. I am not scared to walk down- I am not scared to walk down any street in my city, no matter what time, day or night it is, because I'm confident in myself that I know the people, and you need to, that's what it's all about. When you see the need for somebody that is in need, stop and help, understand. And when I saw the need at, at Alcoa City Council, that some of the things weren't right in my city, I stood up and I say something, and I don't get backed down, and I don't, I don't shy away from it, because that's just the kind of person that I am. And my most best thing about Alcoa is that when you're driving on the eight, you come around that bend, and you can see that valley right there, that's the most beautiful thing I love about, about Alcoa of all. The moon setting over that valley is just, we're, we're a beautiful city, and we're diverse, and there's a place else like it on earth. You could spend the morning playing in the snow, and spend the evening at the beach having a bonfire. There's no other place in the world you can do that at but Alcoa.
Thank you so much, Stephanie. Humbert, your closing statements and what you like best about Alcoa?
Well, I'll start by saying I like the people of East County and Alcoa, especially the people of the second district, which are very hard, hardworking people. And they really put their heart into everything that they do. They take care of each other, and they really, really do put their hearts out, and that's why I raised my entire family here. My entire family grew up here. I worked for small companies, big companies, Fortune 500 companies, and I always came back to Alcoa, and Alcoa has been, is the greatest place that there is. And so that's why I want to represent Alcoa. Um, the biggest thing is that I, I, I want to get endorsements from the people that are the citizens that I've walked the districts for day to day, help them get employed, help them get citizenship, help them, help them from, uh, the way that Alcoa reached out and helped us when we first came here. Uh, when my parents first came here, they actually, a lot of great, beautiful hearts opened up and helped us. And I, I think that Alcoa still can be that and still can be a great place. I've actually done the work. I've actually worked hard for the citizens. I've volunteered for so many different places. I was Citizen of the Year, and I hope that I can, uh, achieve the vote of the people of the second district, because my heart is with them, and my door will always be open, my telephone will always be there, and I'll always be an open door policy that you can contact me as a citizen of, of the second district at any time, and I will listen to you. Thank you very much, and I hope, and I thank everybody that was here and was participating, and Miriam, and all of you that are, are actually running as well. I know it's a hard work, and I thank you all.
Thank you very much, Humbert. Martin, let's have your closing thoughts and what you love best about Alcoa.
Sure. Well, I do want to thank you and everybody involved for this opportunity, and the participants as well. And, you know, I have a lot of experience, and I love to share that. I love to help. It's, it just fills my heart. And when I have the opportunity, as like when I was an inspector, there are many people with many problems. And, 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 and I was instrumental in, in putting effort in so that they could get what they needed to get done. I really tried hard, and I really worked hard, and I, and I know many people that I've met many people in Alcoa. And my favorite thing here is I was, I moved out here when I was younger. I was 21 years old, and I got my first apartment. It was in Lakeside, and I, I came out here because it was affordable, because in town, things were very expensive. Here, you can get a nice place for a fair price. And in doing so, I fell in love with the East County, and, and I stayed out here my whole life. So I was brought in just for pure economics, because that's all I could afford, and I stayed here because I love it. And I want to say one more thing. I just simply want to say that, you know, the constituents, I need you to help me so that I can help you in this election, being your next District Two City Council member. I look forward to your support. Thank you.
Martin, thank you very much. Michelle, could you give us your closing statement and what you like best about Alcoa?
Thank you, Miriam. Thank you to participating in this forum. I want to bring ethics, transparency, and hard work to the office of City Council. Uh, I'm a problem solver. That's what I do at work, is I solve people's problems. When they can't get it through a department, they call me and I get it done. Um, I've already been accomplishing those things here in my district without even being on the City Council. I've got a street light, put in my cul-de-sac, the cul-de-sac next to me. I've got a, a drug house monitored, arrested for doing drugs in our cul-de-sac. I'm trying to clean up the street. I'm a member of the Alcoa Cleanup Group, so where I go out and pick up after people, pick up their trash, pick up mattresses. I'm a hard worker. I'm intelligent, and I know how to solve problems. What I love about Alcoa, it's home. That's where I raise my family. It's where my grandchildren are. And my grandchildren probably have their children here. Alcoa is home, and what more can you say? It's got everything. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Michelle. And Charlie, we'll let you have the last word here. Let's have your final thoughts, your closing statement, and what you love best about Alcoa.
Okay, first, uh, thank you, Miriam, uh, and your crew. Thank you for, for this opportunity to speak in the forum. Um, I, I, you know, um, you want to learn more about me, to everyone listening, and, and, you know, just go to my website, foncarlosmercadado.com, and, and I, I want to end it with this. I want to end it with, with, I, I, Alcoa has an enormous diversity, a lovely diversity, and we need to do more to make sure that our City Council represents that diversity. Not, not just, you know, those that were born here, you know, like a red, I like to, you know, toot his horn, but to the immigrants that just got here. Why can't they be a City Council member? You know, that the one that got here two years ago that's struggling to learn English and assimilate, but likes Alcoa. The week, so we need to make sure that we include everyone. Diversity is awesome. That's where we need to go. That's where Alcoa needs to go. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I, I hope all of you will find ways to stay active and engaged and involved. Good luck to whoever wins, and, and may the rest of you all continue to, you know, contribute your great ideas to the city of Alcoa.
Thank you, Miriam, for doing this. You're awesome.
Well, thank you. We will be posting, if anyone tuned in late and you're watching on Facebook, we will be posting a video of this as soon as we can get it processed, and we will be putting it up on Facebook, YouTube, and on our site at eastcountymagazine.org. And if anybody is not yet registered to vote, please go to sdvote.com. You can get registered, check your registration if you're already registered. Uh, you'll be getting mail-in ballots issued in California that you can either mail in or drop off at any one of a number of polling places and some super centers that will be open ahead of time. So with that, I want to just thank everybody so much, and, um, good luck, and we appreciate all the great questions from everybody. And we also want to thank the Facebook Journalism Project for funding and supporting our series of virtual candidate forums during the COVID-19 era. With that, we're going to conclude our forum and say good night.
Good night. Thank you. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.